Talent City Council Study Session of April 2nd to order roll call please.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
Councilor Penamara.
Here.
Council Medina.
Here.
Councilor Prestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ariswood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you, Hector. Item on the agenda is discussion of selection process for tenants of Plan Talent Community Resource Center staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You requested that I make a proposal. Did I make a proposal to you all as far as a process for selecting the tenants at what is planned to be the Talent Community Resource Center? The purchase of the building is funded by a community development block grant that came to the city. Thanks to an application completed by Gary. I included in the staff report rather than the voluminous hundreds of pages that the the application actually took. The key, the key elements of the project description. And that really comes down to it, there's a, there's a variety of possible services. That the the grant application envisioned serving the residents of talent. There one specific one was really called out and that was food distribution. So what I've laid out in the staff report is I started with a discussion of what would be the. How, who would we prefer, who would you prefer to be occupants in the building? And so I suggested the minimum requirements might be meeting the intent of the grant. Supporting that use of the building as food for food distribution and matching his own. And then I suggested some higher priority decision factors. Being serving high need populations, particularly those that don't aren't, don't currently have services in the community. They are, they are good puzzle pieces. They fit well as sort of puzzle pieces. In terms of the amount of space that they need within the building is what I was trying to say by space requirements are compatible with efficient use of the building. And a record of financial stability. And then other decision factors that I've heard you all discuss and that I thought might make sense would be interesting. Interest in supporting the the resilience hub use of the building. Positive, the positive impact on the, on the organization itself, the benefit to the organization. They are complement each other, other, they complement other tenants. The fact that they are currency tenants might be a factor that we want to consider. And, and that they are, they have staff, I'm particularly thinking about having organizations that we can. Manage as as tenants that might most just go silent on this and we struggle to communicate with them. Well, I think maybe I should stop there and invite discussion of that, that, that first piece.
Member Byers?
Um, I just want to clarify for the record. Food distribution was a requirement per the grant that was submitted.
It wasn't a requirement of the grant, so the the CDBG uses are pretty, are quite broad. It was the one use that the grant application sort of can essentially committed to doing this and will be part of.
Pardon me, like we included in our application that food distribution would be a component of this.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, member Penamara.
Yeah, so just wanted to clarify on the minimum requirements, the second bullet. Support for use of the building for food pantry. I'm echoing, okay. Yeah, so so clearly food distribution is part of it, but when we say support, that doesn't mean that every nonprofit needs to be engaged. In food distribution. So what does that mean, support?
Um, that they're aware of it, that they're happy that it's going to be hap- happening there and that they're not going to complain.
No food pantry in my building.
Yeah, and I guess a little bit further than that, I, I thought. Yeah, I mean, that's why it's a minimum requirement, right? They're, they're happy to be sharing space.
Kind of like a yes, no criteria.
I have a question about, about this as well, if I may. I, I do appreciate the fact that this whole thing started because we need to find a space for the food distribution. But I want to clarify that, that while it does say in the application that food distribution would be a. Let's see, the wording is, the wording is a little less than shall. It's more would, but and I think we all recognize that that is the intention to head it in that direction. But if it were at the expense of other organizations in the space, I think I'd want to have further discussion on that. And I mean, this is certainly the most viable spot for food distribution. As long as I think that we can come to a place where the, the organization doing the food distribution is able to meet. The other requirements such as, and it remains in, I think, the high priority category. Well, I think what we, what we wrote in there was record of financial stability. I would hope that we would. Add to that the ability to, to share the cost for the, for the building. And I think when I say share the cost, I mean, share the expense of maintaining the building. I think we, we determined early on that it wouldn't be more than maintaining the building and. And covering any ancillary costs. I hope that made sense. Yeah, I mean, I, my conclusion on that is that I, while I, well, I mean, I appreciate the fact that. That food distribution falls in the minimum standard, I would say this about any possible use is that. If we set a minimum standard for any possible use and it's not able to say meet the, the equitable use of the, the space. We would want to try to find a solution for that. I would hope.
I'm, I'm not totally sure where, where your suggestion leaves us, Mayor. If, if, if we don't have an organization that wants to do food distribution. That can contribute to the cost of the space. Are you saying that you, you think that we should not then not do food distribution?
I don't think that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that if we make it a minimum requirement. That food distribution is, is part of the space and not make it a requirement that all of the occupants share in the cost. Then, I mean, I think what you're suggesting is that. In the event that there were no, no food distribution organizations that could share in the costs. I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. I suppose that is a different discussion. I'm just, uh, Council Penamara.
Well, just to cut to the chase, if we didn't have a pantry, would it, would it jeopardize the grant?
I, I haven't asked that question. I certainly would be, you know, very happy to. The, the way I read the grant application, the wood, the wood was conditional on receiving the grant. You know, we've, if we received this money, it would be, would have food distribution. That's the way I read the proposal. I'd certainly be happy to check with, you know, our business organ, folks and.
I, I, I don't want to be misunderstood here because that is such an easy thing to happen. I think we all know that the intention of this grant was to fulfill a need that we lost when the, when the town hall burned. And I appreciate the fact that there's language in the grant that addresses that concern. But I don't think there's enough language in this grant that suggests that shared costs would be a minimum standard as well. And I know we had a healthy discussion about that prior to even putting in the grant. That we could not or should not be bringing on another cost burden. And so. So I would just, I don't see it anywhere in here that it addresses that. Directly, and I think that we should address it directly. I certainly don't mean to communicate that I don't think that a food pantry is the priority. I do think it is. Counselor Penamara and then Counselor Medina.
Yeah, I just want to echo, my question was about understanding the parameters that we were working in. I do agree that, that, you know, we really do want to, to have that service to our folks. But I also wanted to comment that I agree with where I think you're going, that the ability to pay rent should be part of the minimal. Requirements, because while we're not looking to profit off these folks, we also want to break even. And so I, I would support that being part of the minimum requirement.
Counselor Medina and then Counselor Byers.
There's some food pantry where the way they are sustainable is that they look for places where they don't have to pay the rent. So I don't know how that would work in, like, it depends, you know, who applied and who wants to do that part of it, but. There's like quite a few who want to do that model.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that would work into.
Well, I mean, it's fair to say that when that model is, when that model is, if you're asking, when that model is deployed, somebody's paying for it. And in the case previously, the, the taxpayers paid for the town hall that they were in previously. But it was a, I, I just want to make sure that we are discussing some of the criteria that we put in place prior to this application. In addition to the food pantry was also kind of being able to maintain the cost. So somebody's going to have to pay for that space. Whether it is distributed amongst the other occupants or whether it's the city paying for that space. Or whether it's a nonprofit and there are other nonprofits that are doing food distribution that do own and maintain their own space at, at a, at their nonprofit costs. Counselor Byers?
To that point, I. Got scattered. To that point, I think a concern for me is the fact that we are in need of updating our maintenance. Schedule for all of the D O N buildings and a funding plan for that maintenance. And this is adding another building to that overall plan and need. And so, yes, I would hope that, which leads kind of to like. My first question, the 1.5 million in the grant covers the purchase of the building and land. And is there a remainder balance to be spent on anything else?
Yes, so we're currently getting an appraisal. I met with the appraiser at the building this morning, actually. So there was tentative agreement as to the expected price. And for the record, I should state, we're not under contract for, for buying this building yet. We still have some environmental review steps to take. So the expected price would leave in the budget somewhere, but hopefully a hundred, maybe $200,000 for some renovation. But that, that's, those were the uses that were included in the grant, so the purchase and some renovation.
Right, so then at that point, we're with a usable building for multiple occupants, hopefully. And now we just need those occupants to be able to cover the cost of the utilities of the building and the maintenance of said building.
Okay, yep, and I would propose then, if, as we move forward with this, that, that another possible. And a fourth bullet point would be to share in the cost of maintaining and paying the, the utilities. And I think that the newspaper, just for the record, I think the newspaper printed something like a dollar ten a square foot, which I think was an erroneous. It was a mistake, I think, because I, we, nobody's even done an assessment on that. And I just don't think it's, it's, I think it's too early to be talking about numbers. But I do, based on really, you know, a lot of discussion about this. And not bringing on another expense for the, for the city. In terms of public spaces, I, I do think that that would be prudent to add that. Counselor Byers?
Well, to your point, Mayor, not only would it be a market rate study, but we would also need to assess the. HVACs of like all the systems that will need to be maintained and replaced at some point in time and factor that into the rent as well, right?
Yeah, I think that would be in alignment with the previous discussions for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Coley?
I don't know if the number that you're referencing was correct or not, but did we, did we not set a blanket nonprofit rate for all the city tenants? Or was that only for a specific, like the depot building or and home street? I don't remember where we, maybe that's where that number came from, but I don't know if that would apply to this building or we're going to approach this building totally. Different because it has different costs than we did assess before, so.
I think that's exactly right. I mean, my memory is that we set the nonprofit rate for all of the tenants that we currently have in the city. But in the discussion before we submitted this grant, we talked about. Wanting to make sure that we would get this resource, bring it into our community, not have the community bear any of the burden of, of the ongoing costs. And then just pass on just that cost. That's what I recall the discussion being, not to make extra money for the city, but just to pass on. And I think I remember Gary saying that there was a possibility that there would also be a management cost if the city chose to use a property management. Firm for that, for that, but, but I don't know if that's where the city's going to land on that.
Just a quick question, does anyone have an idea of how much space in the building of food pantry would likely require?
So, yeah, counselor, the, the working assumption is that if you go to the, the floor plan. So at the bottom of the page is the, is the main entrance.
Right.
At the top of the page are, are two, two offices that with a dashed line down the middle. Though those two offices are actually two separate offices today. I think the working assumption would be to get rid of that wall and to include a movable partition. And that, that, that will become a, you know, one large room. And that that's, that's likely adequate for a few food distribution location. Probably they would need some additional storage, whether that's in that space. Or in another space in the building, I think is an interesting question. Though the way I've been thinking about the economics of this building is that. We need to recover the city's cost of maintenance and of, of the, of the building and operation of the building. I am not confident that we will have an application from a food distribution organization to offer to pay rent.
And then, please, is, is this, is it purely food distribution or whether it be like some kitchen facility and cooking room or not?
There, there's, there is no kitchen in the, in the building.
Yeah, that's why I was. I mean, I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page and there's not an expectation that a food pantry would require a kitchen that would then be put in.
No, they, they don't currently use a kitchen. They, they just, they just.
I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
One of the things that occurs to me as you say that, Alex, is that in our previous model, we had storage in the bottom of the town hall. And then the food bank came in and used town hall for about four hours one day a week. And so if we were distributing that cost of that space amongst a couple of organizations that could use that space. I know that the local senior group is looking for a place to have a senior center. And talking about working with one of the established senior groups to, to, to meet the requirements of that space. I mean, I feel like we could be looking at that larger space for multiple uses. As a way of minimizing the cost for any one of those organizations. I, I come up with a senior space as a good example, just because, a senior center, just because they're looking for a larger open space as well. And so if the, the food. Counselor Colley?
I don't know if the number that you're referencing was correct or not, but did we? Did we not set a blanket nonprofit rate for all the city tenants? Or was that only for a specific, like the depot building or and home street? I don't remember. Where we, maybe that's where that number came from, but I don't know if that would apply to this building or we're going to approach this building totally. Different because it has different costs than we did assess before, so.
I think that's exactly right. I mean, my memory is that we set the nonprofit rate for all of the tenants that we currently have in the city. But in the discussion, before we submitted this grant, we talked about. Wanting to make sure that we would get this resource, bring it into our community, not have the community bear any of the burden of, of the ongoing costs. And then just pass on just that cost. That's what I recall the discussion being not to make extra money. For the city, but just to pass on. And I think I remember Gary saying that there was a possibility that there would also be a management cost. If the city chose to use a property management firm for that, for that, but. But I don't know if that's where the city's going to land on that.
Just a quick question. Does anyone have an idea of how much space in the building of food pantry would likely require?
So if, yeah, counselor, the, the working assumption is that if you go to the. The floor plan. So at the bottom of the page is the, is the main entrance.
Right.
At the top of the page are, are two, two offices that with a dashed line down the middle. Though those two offices are actually two separate offices today. I think the working assumption would be to get rid of that wall and to include a, a movable partition. And that, that, that will become a, you know, one large room. And that that's, that's likely adequate for a few food distribution location. Probably they would need some additional storage, whether that's in that space. Or in another space in the building, I think is an interesting question. The way I've been thinking about the economics of this building is that. We need to recover the city's cost of maintenance and of, of the, of the building and operation of the building. I am not confident that we will have an application from a food distribution organization. To offer to pay rent.
And please, is, is this, is it purely food distribution or whether it be like some kitchen facility and cooking room or not?
There, there's, there is no kitchen in the, in the building.
I mean, I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page. There's not an expectation that. Food pantry would require a kitchen that would then be put in.
No, they, they don't currently. Use a kitchen. They, they just, they just.
I just wanted to make sure.
One of the things that occurs to me as you say that Alex is that in our previous model, we had storage in the bottom of the. Town hall. And then the food bank came in and used town hall for about four hours one day a week. And so if we were distributing that cost of that space amongst a couple of organizations that. Could use that space. I know that the local senior group is looking for a place to have a senior center. And talking about working with one of the established. Senior groups to, to, to meet the requirements of that space. I mean, I feel like we could be looking at that larger space. For multiple uses. As a way of minimizing the cost for any one of those organizations. I, I come up with a senior space as a good example, just because, a senior center, just because they're looking for a larger open space as well. And so if the, the food pantry model was the same where they, where they, and they've operated this way for years. Where they have their food stored and then one day a week for however many hours they distribute. They bring the food out, they distribute it, and then they return the food to their storage. That leaves that space available for. Childcare, for senior spaces, for, you know, other shared, shared cost spaces. And then I think, you know, four hours a week is probably a minimal cost that. I'm not, I'm, I'm still hopeful that while we've approached, we've talked to. Organizations that have operated in the model that you described, Council Medina, we haven't spoken to food distribution organizations that operate in a different. Model. So I think there's still room for. Exploration on that front. Counselor Penamrith?
I just want to say, I really love that idea. And I love, one of the things I love about it is the efficiency of using the space. And so I guess what I'm wondering is whether we can incorporate that idea into the criteria. When we talk about compatibility with this, that, and the other thing, also compatibility as far as. You know, figuring out, making sure everything fits together as far as. Harmonious use of the, that larger space.
Counsel buyers?
When I suggested opportunities for efficiency complementary with other possible lessors, that's exactly what I meant.
It made sense. Counselor Colley?
Yeah, I, I like the idea of the large room being flex space. It's kind of how I pictured it originally. One question that would need to be answered would be whether or not that space was only usable by official tenants of the building. Or if it was like this building is and it's, you know, hour or day rentable space. I'm trying to factor into how it's profitable and cost and stuff.
So if, if I may, so what, what I has been in the back of my mind, I guess I didn't spell out clearly. Or maybe at all in, in the staff report. Was that. And, and actually it's what I was trying to get at by the support, the use. That, that we have clients, tenants, sorry, tenants. Who are interested in using that space at other times. And also they're benefiting from having that flow of clients that they're. Serving similar folks. So they are, that in some sense is an asset to the building. For them, that it's a location that people come to regularly. So if we were not able to, to find a. A tenant who wanted to do food distribution and was interested in being a permanent full-time tenant. My thought about how frankly, where we're, I think we're likely to end up would be. Paying tenants who have access to that space. And that we also have an arrangement with the food pantry and they have access to that space. Without necessarily charging them rent. So we, and the reason I wrote the criteria the way I did, I thought about. Considering them, the both of those at the same time or in the same method. But maybe we should be thinking about selecting a food pantry operator. As a somewhat different process than selected the, the, the rest of your tenants.
Counsel buyers?
To that, and also this discussion of. Shared use of the larger open space in the center of the building. I'm wondering if. Possible tenants would, as I'm looking at these smaller rooms. Be wanting to rent those smaller rooms as storage for whatever program that they are running in. The larger central space. Or office space for staff. I'm wondering if those might be two different options to facilitate an easier flow of setup and tear down. Or whatever's happening in the center.
So just, just to be clear, the, the vision that I inherited was that the. Food pantry space would be at the very top, at the very rear of the building. So, so there's, there's a separate entrance.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
And, and so that if you're looking at this in color, the colored. Door, well, if you're not looking at it in color, the, the doors. To the rear part of the building are the chief tenant, the chief improvements that we're thinking about making.
Got it.
So to, to enable the ability to sort of seal off that part of the building for the rest of the operations. If needed. I think we might want to move one of those doors to increase our rentable space. A little to, to make the, anyway, there's, there's a lot to figure out in terms of physically how best to devise the building. In part based on what our tenants want, what they're interested in paying for. But just to be clear, that the envisioned. Spaces is that, is that real?
I follow. Thank you.
I just want to add one more point. I don't, and I don't want to belabor this too much, but I mean, I, so I have a clear understanding of, of like what. How to offset the cost of open space that could be utilized by every tenant. In one fashion or another in the, in the facility and that, that cost burden then gets distributed. By the other renters. And that's a common property model. But there's still the, the question of the portion of the, the. Food pantry that would be used 24/7 for storage. And so I, I, I think it is a viable idea. Although, you know, I do have a little heartburn distributing cost of open space to every tenant, especially if not every tenant is using it. And, and as long as we can come to, you know, it can be challenging to try and. Have equitable use of open space when everybody's sharing the cost burden of that. But there's still the question of the 24/7 space that is needed and how to offset that. And I, I think I would have a more difficult time offsetting those costs to the other tenants when they have no access to that space. So again, I feel like a minimum standard should be that based on. And I don't think it has to be, and it doesn't have to be, everybody pays the exact same, because that's just not how it works in property management. But that, that space shares the cost burden. And if they're, if we're not able to find somebody that can share that cost burden, I think we need to have a different conversation. Maybe it is adding, maybe it's going to the community and seeing if the community wants to offset that cost. Maybe it's adding to the fees. Maybe it's. You know, I, I do think that there's still room for a lot more explanation, exploration with organizations that are. Orbiting this work, this food access work. I think there's a solution out there. And I'm just less inclined to, to set up a, set up a, a design of criteria that. That designs that cost burden on, on the rest of the tenants. Yep.
So the, the 1.4 million dollars of the purchase of the building is grant funded. As I read the grant largely for the purpose of having a location to do food distribution. So the cost recovery of the building as a whole being spread across those paying tenants. While indeed they would be subsidizing that space, it's still significantly below the cost of the space. I mean, we're right, this, this building is listed for a buck 75 a square foot triple. We're talking about just charging the triple. So. And, and maybe 1.1 times the triple net to count for the fact that the food pantry is there. So that doesn't seem to me to be a bad deal by any stretch of the imagination to the other nonprofit tenants. And I will confess and put right out there, part of what I'm thinking about is the amount of staff time. It's going to take to figure this out. And I'm afraid that you all are creating quite a conundrum for staff. By insisting on several things that are, I, I struggle to see how that's going to work.
Counselor.
I'm glad to hear what you just said, because that's exactly what I was wondering if. To cover the cost of the food pantry, if they weren't still getting a lot better rent than they would anywhere else other than create somewhere. It sounds like that's true. So it seems like, for me anyways, we could almost. Just assume that that's going to be the way it goes and take some of the conundrum out of the equation.
Counselor Colley?
Yeah, partially in thinking of, you know, how much work it'll be to rent out the building, the remaining, however many little offices. Would we want it to be one of our goals to have those? Would, would one of the goals be to have? As few other tenants as possible for ease of. Renting it and, you know, staff time working with tenants, because I can see, you know, there's a lot of organizations out there that would want one of those little rooms. But is there an organization that wants all of them or half of them or the rest of the entire building? Do they want to do improvements? You know, those are questions that I have.
If we were, if we're a full profit owner of the building, that, that's the only factor we'd look at, right? And I think, I, I think it's a really important factor that's the, what I was trying to get with. With the space requirements are compatible with efficient use of the building. So if we've got a lot of folks who want single offices. That, that may be, that may be a reasonably efficient use of the building. It is a challenging building to split up. There's, the hallways are oversized. So the net rentable space is going to be a challenge to figure out with a lot of small tenants. I think, you know, the most efficient use of the space would probably be a small number of large, larger tenants. But I, I don't know that that's, that we want to get that to be the sort of. Only significant factor.
I, I, I just want to add one more point. I appreciate the point very well. And actually it lands, it lands well on me to hear you say that. This could be a staff burden and certainly not what we want to cause. What I would propose then is that we give preference to a food distribution organization that can. Share in the cost. And so that we, we do take the time to look into other organizations that might be willing to do the distribution. We're watching. Our, our most prolific. Organization in the area is Access, and they're the ones who provide the food for the distribution and. And they're willing to provide food, not to any organization. They, they said that in a recent, recent meeting. That is willing to distribute the food in lieu of having to pay rent. Uniquely in talent. They don't pay rent at any of their distribution centers. But we're also watching them. Re, re. Let's see, reorganize. They're, they're in the middle of a reorganization. They just. Yeah, parted ways with food and friends. And there's, there's, there's a lot of issues around that that are, that are coming up. And I just don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket. And. I, I do think there are other organization, organizations that we can approach to support this effort and. Other, so I, I guess to get, to get to the point, I think that there might be room for not creating. A situation that could ultimately be unsolvable if there's nobody out there that wants to support. Food distribution and talent in that way. For us to have a, a means of, of dealing with that. But I do think we should prioritize. As, as how I'd like, and you know, I'm looking for the, oh, I think it's my packet. The bullet point. So if for, for all other organizations, I do think that we should make it a minimum requirement. That they can share in the cost of the square footage of the building. And I guess that'll include the, the open space and presumably if there's nobody that will do the. No nonprofit coming in to, to take the share for the food distribution, it would be presumably sharing in the cost of that as well. So how do you word that? As a minimum requirement? Separating those two, yeah, those two thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you phrased it accurately. What I, I'm thinking that I might come back to you all with. Sort of two lists here. One would be the minimum requirements and prioritizations for a food distribution provider. And then minimum requirements and, and selection criteria for, for other tenants.
Right? Does anybody see that differently? I want to see something different. Yeah, great. I do, I do like that we've landed in place where we all agree on the, the original intent of this was to. To find something to replace where they were before, so. Or the, the service that we had before, I should say. Counsel Penamrith?
Yeah, we're getting close to time, so I just wanted to, I did have a comment about the topic.
Yeah, go ahead.
So. Some of the organizations that I'm familiar with, that, that there's, you know, very careful scoring and stuff. That what happens is there's a, there's a technical committee of the staff that develops the scoring criteria that's approved by policy folks. And what the staff does is they score the, the folks that are applying for, you know, limited resource. And that they come up with a recommendation and that is then rises to the level of the policy. Committee, which will make the, the final decision. And I'll just, I'm not really, I don't, I'm not really in one camp or the other, but I'll just play devil's advocate for clarity. One of the good things about that is it doesn't put staff in the position of, of. That staff has seen as, you know, we're, we're, we're just doing the nuts and bolts stuff. We're completely objective. And these are the folks that'll make the, the final decision. So the kind of. I'm also aware that there is something in, in the charter that talks about the city manager shall supervise operation of all. Public utilities and property. So that's in section 23. So that's a question of like, what does it mean supervised? Does it mean makes a decision to live there or, or does it mean maintenance of the day, day to day? So that might be a visible question. We supervise is like, you know, the supervisor isn't necessarily the decision. The landlord thinks who makes the decision, who doesn't. But, you know, that's a. So anyway, those are just some thoughts that I wanted to put out there as far as who makes the final decision.
I, I'll address the scoring piece first. I, I. As you have, I've been through a lot of those processes and it's. To my mind, it's a little bit easier when you're distributing $10 million. And you get a prioritized list with this and sort of the puzzle piece nature of it. I, I think that a more qualitative approach is. You're going to have to get there eventually because your pure scoring, it's, seems very unlikely to me. That the pure numerical score is going to end up with the building full.
Can I, can I just respond? It's, it's like staff would come up with the recommendation. You do all that work. It's just the final decision is what I'm suggesting.
Sure, sorry. And I, I was just addressing the piece about numerical scoring versus what I, what I.
Yeah.
And allow Dave to answer the, the other question.
The question about the charter?
Yeah.
Well, he, he does say supervised. There's, there's another clause in there somewhere, but what clearly can happen is. The council can delegate decision. For instance, on. Remembering out spaces in a facility like this to the. To the city manager. I think the city manager in his proposal is, is, is having basically. To the city manager, I think the city manager in his proposal is 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 having basically come back to the council. For their review.
Fair information.
Right, uh and but at that point, or before, the council can either say, we do want, either ones. To make this decision. Or they can say we're delegated that.
So you're so David, you're saying you're saying that um as far as the charter is concerned, it's okay for the council to make that decision?
I think so, it's it's ambiguous in the charter.
Okay.
Um as you say, because the word supervising is not defined, but um. You also may wanna, I mean, the sort of obverse of what you said is, the council may. Want it not to appear like a political decision and put it in the hands of the staff, of that reason. So I I really think that ultimately is up to the council.
I also wanted to say I scan corrected, I I I said otherwise, I said, uh and I apologize, Council Panamriff, I mean, I think I. Yeah, I think I may have misled you on that on section twenty-three, so.
No, I think I think it, I'm glad to hear it is, and.
Yeah. Section uh.
Section Dave.
Section Dave.
Yeah, I think just to Alex's point, you know, I I think. That however the decision gets made, I do think that the scoring thing is would be a challenge, because. Part of it's fitting the puzzle pieces together, and there may be different criteria, but you can fill the building versus. Even some of it empty because someone needed a little more space, you know what I mean? But I think that is gonna be a big challenge.
I hope you got what you needed from this conversation.
Thank you, I think I did, I think I got, I think I got exactly what. And so we we I will bring back a revised proposal and expect. Uh more council discussion on Council Panamriff's point of question about who who should be the ultimate arbiter.
I I do wanna say that uh the way the proposal is written as it is, the way that I I believe that the the section called Approach to Selection does delegate. It does, it actually does delegate.
As proposed, absolutely, and and I'm sorry to jump in. And that that was my understanding of of the cap council members' preference who I had spoken to. I don't have a strong opinion about it, I I'm very happy for for a council to to take this burden off.
I believe me when I say I wanna take responsibility for that, because I my understanding was that uh that. That was the purview of the city manager, and I expressed that in in a conversation, so um if uh you built this. Under that understanding, um my apologies if I put you to work that wasted your time, so. Or maybe it didn't waste your time, I don't know.
We we had to start somewhere.
Yeah, I guess so. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, everybody, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-six, and you guys wanna uh take a break till six fifty?